Father God, I just thank you for the beautiful weather we're having. Lord, I thank you for giving us a vision of, for Walden County of the future, where we want to go, what we want to be like when we grow up. Our Father, I just ask God for the major projects that are trying to come in, the motocross, the environmental center. Lord, do you know what's best for our county, the best family atmosphere that we will continue to have? And I ask for you to give us wisdom and guidance as we go forth tonight in making important decisions in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, before we get started, we would like to all wish you a happy birthday. I understand that you're trying to catch up with me, honey, but there ain't no way you can do it. But happy birthday from all of us.
Well, thank you very much. It's the Marine Corps birthday, everybody. Thank you. Welcome to our board meeting. Before we get involved with the stuff, there's a couple announcements I'd like to make and some, some good things that have happened to Walton County in the past couple days, and I'd like to share them with you. The first two deal with money. And both items that I've got to talk about with money are from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation. They have awarded $2.1 million to Fish and Wildlife for the Sea Turtle Conservancy to eliminate the light pollution on sea turtle nesting beaches for their second phase. So, $2.1 million is going to be coming to the area to help eliminate the, the light pollution infecting sea turtles. The other is coming to DEP, and it's for $931,000, and it's to study the, the problems with regards to pollution in the Chalk, Tatchie River Basin that includes Walton, Washington, and Holmes County. So, those are things that we've been looking forward to for, for quite some time, and there's going to be some funding coming in to help get those projects done. And lastly, on Friday, we received a commendation from Congressman Jeff Miller thanking Walton County for their support of the veterans, and I know Veterans Day is coming up tomorrow, but we're one of the few counties that received an honor such as this. So, we also take pride in, in the fact that our veteran service does a, a great deal for Walton County. And part of that is not only with the board, it's, it's with the staff and with the citizens. So, we thank you for your efforts here, too. Okay. Mr. Jones, additions and deletions?
None, sir.
Very good. Approval of the agenda?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Any public comments with regards to items on the agenda? Ms. McQuiston? Which item would you like to address?
Well, they're on the agenda anyway, to address the intersection at 395 and 38.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. I gave a handout. Don't take this off my minute yet. Thank you. Molly McQuiston, M-C-Q-U-I-S-T-O-N. You have before you a history of 10 years, a 10-year history of talking about a problem, the problem that is still there. The problem is the 395-38 intersection in Seagrove Beach. You have deflected a solution to this problem with multiple public hearings, workshops, meetings with property owners, and now we're waiting for another study. This problem has not gone away, and a new study won't make it go away. We should not go through another spring break or summer with more pedestrians, more bikes, more cars, without a turn lane at this intersection. You unanimously approved a turn lane over two years ago in 2013. The county owns the right-of-way, which I just found out about two weeks ago. We own the right-of-way north and south. You don't need private property to put in the turn lane and move the bike path to the There has been no leadership in getting a resolution at this intersection. And Commissioner Meadows, you said in the last BCC meeting, leadership is doing what you say you're going to do. Well, you all said you were going to put the turn lane in two years ago. The funding has been in the budget for that. We have the right-of-way, and I'm asking you to please do that now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McQuiston. Any other, yes ma'am?
Lady, I want to give this tomorrow.
We state your name for the records, file your last name, and tell us which agenda item you'd like to talk about.
Lisa Bouche, B-O-U-S-H-Y. Are the quasi-judicial items considered part of the agenda for this?
Actually, they're part of the land use, and they'll come after 5:00.
Okay. So, they don't count right now?
No. Well, not to take comment, not to take testimony on them.
Okay. Thank you.
Any others? Okay. Next, we have the consent agenda.
Motion to approve, second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Public comment? Seeing none, all of us in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the Waste Management, EAL. Mr. Chapman, any, you want to make your comment? That you're recused on the EAL for Waste Management?
I don't recall seeing any on the EAL this month.
Is he going for that? Okay. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item is, if you recall, at the last board meeting, we made an appointment to the local Restore Committee. The individual that the board voted to appoint declined to serve. So, we would make a recommendation today that you appoint Frank Shup to that position. It's the economic development position, and we believe that he was the most qualified from an economic development standpoint of those that applied.
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second. Any further board discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all of us in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. Next item is a request to approve for staff to advertise an RFP for Category 1 E-Rate Services for Walton County. This is part and parcel to the broadband initiative. So, this is funding that would be applied to that if we do receive it. So, in order to do that, we need an RFP to move this forward.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. What's the difference between this and the next one, which is Category 2?
Two pots of money. The second one is specific for equipment and inside wiring.
Okay. Going on the first pot, we have a motion and a second. Any further board discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all of us in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
As I just mentioned, the next item is regarding Category 2 of E-Rate funding, which allows up to $9,200 per library for equipment and inside wiring, which would be, again, part and parcel to the broadband initiative. There is a match that would be required from the county of $7,300. We have not identified that money. If we are awarded these funds, we would look for that from the appropriate place.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion and a second. Any further board discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all of us in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. Next item is a request to submit an application to apply for the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services Health Resources and Services Administration Service and Area Completion, that's a lot, grant, to allow our Department of Health to continue providing primary care services at all locations, including the Phoenix Springs Coastal Lakes Library, Mossy Head, and Paxton. These funds are ones they currently utilize in the operation of those facilities. However, due to some changes, they're not allowed to be the grant recipient. So, we're asking you to allow us to apply for those funds on behalf of the Health Department to continue the services that they already have in place.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further board discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all of us in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. If you recall at the last meeting, we had a request before you from the Sheriff's Office regarding to provide an experience rating to the Sheriff's Office from Florida Blue. You directed us to ask for an opinion from our insurance consultants, combined insurance. We got that recommendation from them. It's in your board packet. Basically, they suggest that if we're going to do this, that we wait and do it closer to the time of our renewal, which would be later in the springtime. Spoke to the sheriff this morning. He is perfectly fine with that. So, we would recommend no action at this time, other than to, let's move it forward into the appropriate time closer to the renewal of our health insurance. And if you wish to take action, then we'd be glad you could do that.
Okay. Any concerns by the board? Okay. Next item.
As you all know, Thanksgiving is coming up. Couple of weeks, we have a board meeting scheduled for the Tuesday prior to Thanksgiving. We just wanted to bring it to your attention to make sure we will have a forum. That meeting will be at 9:00 in Phoenix. If there's reason to move it, we would like to know today if that's possible. We can set a time or reschedule. From a staff perspective, we don't have any reason to, but we do want to make sure that we will have a forum present. So, if any of you are going to be traveling or out of town, or you know, otherwise, we'll just continue on with it.
I'll be here. I can be here.
Me, too. Okay. Sounds like we'll all be there.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. That's all we have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. No Public Works items? TDC? Is that Stan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a request to award RFP 015029 for beach safety services to South Walton Fire Department and approve and authorize Chairman to sign the agreement. This is the lifeguard services. As you know, we've been negotiating this for quite some time. The, the price did go up, but also did the services that we're, that we're receiving. We've got, we've included two more weeks on the front end to include more of spring break and additional lifeguard at Creighton Beach. So, we would ask for your approval of that agreement.
Motion to approve, second.
A motion and a second. Any further board discussion?
Yeah. And then I hear you say we're going to add one at Creighton Beach State Park?
We've added an additional lifeguard at Creighton Beach State Park, where the artificial reefs have been deployed.
Right.
And two weeks on the front end of the contract to cover more spring break. So, it'll be starting at March 1 now, as opposed to the second week in March.
Great. Thank you.
Any other board comment? Any public?
You did a good job for bringing this to us. You and the, you did a good job. Everybody involved.
Any public comment? Seeing none, all of us in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
As far as updates, the September TDT data is in for the month of September. The bed tax collection, $1,932,403.16. That is a 24.63% increase month over month. And for fiscal year '15, the bed tax collections were $20,000,146,673.96. And year over year, that's a 12.32% increase. So, some good news there. And the last update that I have for you is we actually advertised the executive director vacancy today. We have it posted internally on the county website. We also intend to, in the next couple of days, put it on Visit Florida, DMAI, and VADMO websites as well.
Okay.
And it'll be advertised until December 11. I think we've got it advertised for 30 days. That's all I have.
Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Commissioners. The first item I have is a request to a...
I'm sorry?
Do you have any public comments on any time to do with TDC? Or no?
Well, you can, at the public comments section, you make, there's no, there's no motions on the floor, but during public comments, we'd be glad to hear from you about TDC.
Thank you, Commissioners. The first item I have is a request to approve dedicating and naming a easement, which is going to be a road, the Rita Arnett, Arnett Lane. As you know, Mr. Toy Arnett has agreed to provide an easement to Walton County between County Road 393 and Helen McCall Park in order to improve the ingress and egress between the park and three, and the public road. It is the county's intention to eventually pave this road, and Mr. Arnett has asked if we would name the road after his wife, and there's resolution before you do that effect.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further board comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, all of us in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? A motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. Back in October of this year, the board asked me to seek an Attorney General's opinion regarding the use of TDC funds to fund a, or TDT funds to fund a shuttle service along County Highway 30-A and scenic Highway 98. In your packet is the proposed letter to the Attorney General's Office, and we'd like for you to approve the letter and authorize the Chair to sign.
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further board discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all of us in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
The third item is a lesson for me in bureaucracy. We, as you know, we have been working with both FEMA and the Florida Emergency Management System Services Office to approve us giving essentially a right-of-entry and a contract to operate a well on the Calford property that we own for the benefit of some residents in the Calford subdivision. The Florida Emergency Management folks have approved the right-of-entry. We are still waiting on FEMA. We basically contact them every week and see where they are, and we still have not heard back from them. I just wanted to let you know that we're still pursuing finishing that project. And that's all I have, Commissioners.
Commissioner Meadows?
Yeah, just a couple things. I'd like to recognize all the veterans and thank them for their service. If y'all would stand, we'd like to give y'all a round of applause if you served in any armed services or are serving. Thank you. And then the second thing is on the 395-38 intersection. For those of that, for those of us who live there, right there at the corner and experience that all the time, the roundabout was deemed to not, at this point, not be a viable option. So, we looked at, at buying some right-of-way. That turned out to not turn out because it wasn't in the best interest of the county to, to go with that agreement at that time. And so, we, we added the patrol officer, which, which tended to work out pretty well. And now, we're looking at turn lane within our right-of-way, possibly, and, and probably a traffic light at that section. But as you know, the V is getting ready to tear down Seagrove Village Market, and they're getting ready to tear down Snappy Turtle on that site. And they're going to be adding some more, adding some condos, another restaurant, and some offices there. So, that whole intersection for the next, I don't know what their expected date of completion is, but that whole intersection for the next, I'd say nine months, is going to be a construction zone. So, we need to think about that when we are, whatever we're doing, we need to, we need to understand that that will be a construction zone for the next nine months, I would presume. They're getting ready to tear them down. They've got their approved plans, and they have a curb cut there right near that intersection. So, whatever happens there, we need to take that into account as well. And so, and we certainly don't want to go through, we certainly don't think that just cutting through existing neighborhoods, as Ms. McQuiston and Ms. Covina have suggested, is, is really a viable option. We'd like to finish the study, update it with numbers, and determine what, what really is the best viable option to take traffic east of Eastern Lake, north to 98, and split the people going those ways instead of to take the, to take the congestion off of 395 and 38. So, all of that is in the works, and, you know, I certainly appreciate this, this little trilogy of what's going on there because I live there, I experience it every day, and I'm trying to do what's best for everybody.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
I ask this question, this should be a mark. If they're going to be doing construction there, and it is going to be quite heavy and lengthy, is it possible for the county to ask the developers to help pay for their, again, a policeman or someone there to help monitor that traffic? I mean, if they're going to be causing the congestion?
The question, the answer to the question is yes, we can certainly ask.
One of the things, too, that, that...
Can we ask anything? What is the possibilities?
I didn't mean that to be sarcastic.
Commissioner Commander?
What is the possibility of us getting anything?
Commissioner Commander, I need to add that, too, that when they got their plan approved years ago, they paid a huge prop share fee. I think it was over a million dollars. That prop share fee, some of it's still left, some of it isn't. So, that prop share fee goes to mitigate their ongoing traffic as far as the construction goes. I think we do need that because there is a big house going up across the street from them as well. And there are, there's a lot of, in fact, we have some aerial views of actually what's going on out there that I, I'll pass around, and you can see that there's a lot of big trucks, there's drilling rigs, there's, and that's just for that little house. So, once we go to this, this, this other, you know, project, there's going to be some construction vehicles there. And they do have the roads blocked off quite, quite, quite a lot just for that house construction. So, actually, there's two houses going on in there. So, it's, it's become quite a, quite an intersection or an area. So, I would agree that, that whoever's doing construction needs to have flag men out there and needs to be controlling traffic, but I'll pass those down. You can just pass them around.
Mr. Davis, will you check into that, please?
Yes.
See what we have. Thank you.
And Mr. Davis, would you, I know when I was on the board, we were dealing with the, the residents at the end of the road. Where, what happened? Did that break down? Or could you give us an update on?
Kind of sort of, but I hate to put it that way. But here's what happened. We actually approved a proposed agreement with some conditions, I want to say in November of 2013. The conditions eventually, and I couldn't tell you tonight what the date was, but were eventually agreed upon. However, we started the process of trying to, trying to, part of the agreement was that the property would be purchased through a forgiveness of some prop fair share fund, prop share fair obligations by EBSCA. When we started trying to talk to appraisers, when I started trying to talk to some appraisers about getting appraisal so we could see whether or not we could comply with our, our ordinance regarding the purchase of property, they, they were very reluctant to frankly even try to appraise those little strips of property. And then actually moved along for a while, and then the, the traffic person was put there, and it sort of, for lack of a better word, the momentum for the agreement sort of died, and we were sort of instructed to hold off until we, we know what's going to happen in terms of the future and...
If I can, can I add, can I add something to that? Because I was involved in that. The, the property owners wanted us to move the pavement north on 38 and to give them the rest of the land in that right-of-way, and to agree to never ever put the sidewalk, the bike path on the south side of the road, which is where all the engineers say that it really makes more sense to put it. Also, they wanted to put a six-foot wall all along that section and wanted to, us to agree with it in the, wanted us to agree to give them variance, and I think that was an issue. And then they wanted us to pay for the land and give them 120-something thousand dollars in impact fee credits for Alice Beach. So, I think all those put together, you know, it wasn't in the best interest of the county to do that at the time. That's, that's what I remember.
And after the vote, there was some discussion back and forth with the folks there, and some of those conditions were changed and agreed upon, but we never got past, I never got past the appraisal issue, so.
Well, yeah, and they never came forward and said, you know, we'll, we'll agree to this, take it to the board, so.
Right. Yeah, I understand that. So, so do we have enough, I mean, and this might be a Public Works question, but do we have enough to improve that intersection if they don't agree? I mean, can we move forward with, with doing? You know, the, the issue's this. We've got, in five years, we're going to have a million people, million tourists, they, this predicted, and 30,000 permanent residents. 38, I mean, any given day, you, you can get in that intersection, traffic's backed up to Tom Thumb. I mean, now, granted, I want to see the Genesis re-study before we even look at Connect, and I, and I thought that's what all, you know, this was about. I, I get told a lot, you know, we want the connector right here, we want the connector right here, but I'm not blaming anyone for making recommendations or suggestions to me. But I do think that we, we've got to look at 38, and we've got to make some tough decisions on the direction we're going to go there to start with, I think.
Commissioner, to answer your question, Public Works has shown me, I don't know if they've shared it with you, a, a plan with a turn lane that would, on both, on both roads, that would be, you know, solely located on our, on our right-of-way.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, in my discussions with Chance Powell, our engineer, and also some chances here somewhere, correct me if I say something wrong on here, but he, he showed me three or four different proposals of designs for that particular intersection. And as I'm seeing it here, we've been waiting for a long time for somebody to grant us or agree to some type of land swap here, and it's been laying dormant for a while. Now, correct me if I'm wrong there, Counselor.
Well, I, I don't want to throw them under the bus as much as, or me under the bus, but the truth of the matter is, we, we approved an agreement with, with conditions. Some of those conditions were later agreed upon by their folks. But, and then I, frankly, because of what was going on with the traffic person and the issue I had with the, the appraisals and trying to comply with our purchase policy, I never brought it back to you guys.
Okay. Well, with that being said, I think it's time that we need to move forward. We need to, I've got a term, but it's not for this, anyway. If I understand, we have enough right-of-way on the north 395, 35, 395 north, and also in the intersection 38 there, that we could put a turn lane to go northbound from the westbound direction, or the eastbound, and also from the westbound, and from the south... and also from the westbound, and from the south going west on 38. We've got enough right of way there. I think we're just go ahead and move forward, settle on the design, get it done, and then in my discussions with Chance, I understand 30, to put the bike path on the south side, safety-wise, is probably the best place to put it. Limits, interaction with the public out there. However, that's apparently an issue with the landowners on the south side there. So if we're gonna have, if it ends up being kept on the north side, we need to take it as it rounds that corner there and move it further away from that intersection for the cross, probably at the stop bar for the southbound lanes. Chance, that's what I talked to you about the other day, to minimize the risk of somebody being run over in that intersection. And then get it on down. Now, the other thing, I don't want to run you off yet, but the other thing is, with the view, the destruction, demolition that's going place at Village Market, is that grove that's just to the north there?
Yes.
Okay. It would be nice to limit entry from that parking area that would be there and additional construction as far north of that intersection as possible so we can minimize the in-and-out traffic and the issue of people having to stop going northbound to turn in. If we could maybe shift it, and there should be a coordination between our planning department or the engineers concerning the plan for the egress and going into this particular parking lot. So those are some concerns, is try to move as much of that vehicle turning and pulling out away from the primary intersection. And try, if it could, if you're going northbound off 38, have a means of putting a turn lane somewhere in there to get that traffic that may be wanting to turn into the view, parking area, whatever, that the northbound traffic continue to go.
It sounds real good, but when you go out there, you're gonna see that you're gonna have so many driveway cuts, and it's...
Well, I've been out there, Commissioner. I've been by there.
I know, but you can't put a, you're not gonna be able to put a right turn into the V because it's already been approved, and...
I ain't asking to put a right turn into the V for southbound. I'm talking about a left turn off of the northbound. You're going northbound, you're getting away from that intersection, have a left turn lane going into the V.
You're gonna take out all that parking that they use now?
Every bit of it on this side.
Yeah, it's gonna delete, and we were trying, we were trying to save some of that parking. I mean, we're working with a lot of moving pieces.
This is the county right of way, and we ought to be utilizing it for what our needs are, to help facilitate the safety and the movement of traffic and not for some private development. Excuse me.
Well, I agree, but that's not happening in every business you have on 38. That is not happening. So if we're gonna do it for them, then we need to do it for the other business.
We're really doing it for our citizens that are backed up in traffic. So do we need reengineering, or can we go with the current plan?
If that's the direction we want to go, why don't you give us staff some time? Because I know they've been working through getting this done, and I think they have come to the conclusion there's sufficient right of way to make some improvements. So if the direction from the board is for us to take a look at that and bring you back what options are available?
Yeah, take a look at it, and where's the money gonna come from, too? How are we gonna pay for it? And when is it gonna be done? Is it gonna be done before the V starts construction? I don't think so.
There was money in, to do roundabouts in every intersection. Have, has that gone somewhere else? I mean, the intersection improvements were...
Yeah, it went to Orster Lake, Orster Lake Bridge. It took us a year and a half to get the permits for the intersection, 395 and 98. You know, there are things that we have to deal with that, you know, if we could just go out and throw up something, we would. But we have to get permits from the state, DEP, all that. So it's not an easy, let's fix this now, let's get this out there, so.
I'd just like to see some movement.
And, you know, as Mr. Davis pointed out, you can always ask. You know, I think, you know, we need to start, and we need to start now. We'll find the money if we can get it done, and if we can get it done before tourist season, more better. But if we can't, let's start working on it now, you know?
Not to be pessimist, but once we decide on what it's gonna look like, there's engineering, designing, permits, so it'll be a lengthy process. But I agree, if that's the direction you'd like us to take, we will immediately begin putting some final touches on what work's already been done to bring you options for improvements at the intersection within the existing right of way.
And ideally, it would've been nice if we could've had an agreement with, you know, the people, but if you can't, then you just move on.
Yes, ma'am. That's Monica's. Let me just say, within the existing right of way, but you wouldn't preclude me from discussing with those folks if they want to amend that agreement?
Oh, absolutely. That's the best plan.
I just want to make, because I'm sure I'm gonna get a phone call.
Yes, that's the best plan.
Well, it'd have to come back to us, and we'd have to go, we'd have to prove it, yeah.
Let's move forward. And I think Mr. Warbeck had his hands up.
Mr. Warbeck, briefly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. My name is Gary Warbeck, I'm a attorney from Destin, Florida, and I represent EBSCO, who owns that, the corner that we're talking about. And I just want to emphasize what Mark stated, is we've worked this out and worked out in good faith and worked out an agreement that, in fact, got sent to us from the county attorney's office almost, a little short, two years ago. And since that time, we've been waiting, and Mark's been waiting to get an appraisal. But I just want everyone to know, EBSCO has been cooperative and hasn't been holding this up one minute. And so if the board doesn't want to go through with the agreement, that's fine, it's a decision this board can make, obviously, because it's not executed. But I just want to emphasize what Mark says, it hasn't been EBSCO. EBSCO's been here wanting to cooperate okay.
Thank you, Mr. Warbeck.
Mr. Warbeck, would y'all be willing to delete the item that the bike path could not be on the south side for perpetuity?
Commissioner, I don't know. I mean, I know we had an agreement that we agreed to, other than that, I can't tie.
And would you be able to, there are a couple of things. Would you be able to delete the six-foot walls along that whole section?
Oh, no, that was, that's been deleted. We've got to comply with, it was pointed out to the board, rightfully so, that hey, you have to comply with the comprehensive plan and land development code. And so you can't do an agreement that aggregates that. So that's been agreed two years ago.
Okay, okay. And then I think, I think the, I'm not quite sure that, yeah, nobody signed on the dotted line from your end, and nobody signed on the dotted line?
No, we don't have an executed agreement.
So there is no, there is no agreement?
No, there was an understanding. Agreements are all written out.
And it wasn't Mark's fault, and it wasn't y'all's fault. It just was not, it was just kind of laid to rest.
I just wanted to make sure for the record, it's not my plan. We'll sit down anytime.
Thank you, Mr. Warbeck.
Thank you.
Ms. McQuiston, briefly.
Yeah, I just want to ask a quick question because we're talking, sorry, Bonnie McQuiston again. Just a real quick question. You know, with the V going in and doing all the extra work and all, do you have any idea what you're gonna do with all the electric wires, the utilities, all the really ugly wires and things there? Because this might be a really good opportunity to work with them and try to get them to help us with those, you know, put those utilities underground. I think that was suggested at some point in the past, and that would help us with our turning lane, too, if they would help, you know, finance that. Thank you.
Just to that end, Ms. McQuiston and board members, we had a meeting last week regarding that issue, so there are some things in the work, in the works that might help accomplish that.
Ms. Harris, you had your hand up?
I'm at my level.
Okay, Commissioner, anything else? Got that covered?
Nothing, that's it, yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Commander.
Nothing, other than we probably won't see most of y'all before the time we meet again, so we hope you have a happy Thanksgiving with your family and friends. And when you're totally bored on Saturday before the football games start, please come to Defuniac Springs and see our 26th Annual Hometown Christmas. You will enjoy it.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes. Starting tomorrow, the West Florida Regional Council is sponsoring a transportation symposium at Sandeston. If you're interested in that, please come. And also, just on a real positive note, I am really proud of our Walden Braves. They are led by Coach Jimmy Ray Stevens, and they went undefeated this year. And this Friday, they'll go up against Jacksonville Bowls in Defuniac for the first of the four rounds in the Florida State Championship, so I'm believing they're gonna go all the way. That's it. Happy Thanksgiving.
Commissioner Chapman.
I want to thank all the veterans that are present here tonight for their service to this country. As a veteran myself, I know how much it means to me to show that admiration to other veterans. But again, thank you for your service. I know not only is the veteran been impacted, if you will, depending on what's going on in the world, but their spouses, too. And thanks to them for standing by their man or woman, whatever it may be, might be. But thanks again for that, and again, I hope everyone has a happy and safe Thanksgiving in a week or so. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll add my appreciation to the veterans as well, but the, one thing I'd like to point out is this morning, I got to attend at South Walton High School, a recognition breakfast for the veterans. Very, very well done, and I realized, Mr. Davis says, being on the school board, would you convey back to them, they did an outstanding job in recognizing it. And most importantly to me is that they were educating their students as to the importance of the veterans and what the military does for this country. So putting it to all of the students for this appreciation meant a lot to me, and again, my appreciation to all of the veterans out there, their families, and also the happy Thanksgiving wishes, although we do have another board meeting before Thanksgiving.
We do, but why these folks won't be there?
Debbie Hurd.
That's not Debbie Hurd.
Sorry, but Debbie Hurd was not able to make it tonight, so I'm stepping in. I'm Marcia Anderson on the Coastal Dune Lake Advisory Board. And we feel that it's important, as a county committee, to just report to y'all every now and then about our works and our progress and things that we are doing. And I did have a report here that Ms. Hurd, our president and chairman, or co-chairman, has wanted me to bring forth to y'all. And this part is explaining that we, as the board, had identified several different goals, which it says see attached, so I guess y'all have got a copy of our goals. And this said that board was created into five different subcommittees to work with the special goals. And the subcommittees were special designation, grants and funding, representative groups, education group, and environmental government liaison group. And in 2015, we agreed to extend our 2014 goals for three years. And during this timeframe, the Coastal Dune Lake Advisory Board has done the following. In the grants and funding group, our committees have submitted application to the local Restore Act to consider the direct component funds for the project titled Coastal Dune Lake Ecological Assessment: A Study of Current and Historical Ecological Conditions to Guide the Future of the Management. We believe this is very important for the coastal dune lakes, and we're hoping that our grant will be accepted in the Restore Act. Our education group has worked with the CBA and the BioPhilia Center to present coastal dune lake educational materials for our students. And we also like to thank the BioPhilia Center with Brittany and Lauren there in their educational presentations. They also include the coastal dune lakes and how important and rare they are. Educating the community, the Coastal Dune Lake Advisory Board has worked with the Stalstis in his documentary that he's made on the film. It was, it's been highly successful and award-winning, and it has been showed on PBS around the country, and we have gotten recognition that way. Also, it's been used to show, like I know the other day, the realtors had a meeting, and they showed the CD. And I think we have been working on educating the realtors in our area so that they will know when they are presenting a piece of property on the coastal dune lakes, that they can tell the buyer some of the regulations and rules and things like that so that their buyer beware, or just be educated onto what they're buying into. The TDC, the CBA, and the Walton have created five interpretive signs, which are along the walkway, or adding more signs. In the spring of 2016, additional signs will be added to that. And I have seen visitors stopping and looking at it, and each sign has different information on it. We think that's very important for the tourists in the area so that when they come down here, they don't just pass over the lake, they know what the lake is, how the outfall works, what their importance are, and things like that. We've been working on educating the landowners and homeowners with pamphlets, brochures, and distributing the information to them. Neighborhood Lake Watch...
Go ahead and finish up.
Neighborhood Lake Watch. Each lake has a protector and communicates with Debbie Hurd on this. They assess with enforcement, they have a paddleboard, lifeguards, locals are engaged in the reports. We have ex officio community representatives. Debbie Hurd communicates with all the local homeless owners associations. We have a special designation group, and we've been working with the DEP on finding out what special designations our lakes would qualify for. The last thing, I'll, you have a, it's really the Coastal Dune Lake Advisory Board, as well as the West Florida Regional Planning Council, the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, 1,000 Friends of Florida, as well as some members of the public recommend pursuing an environmental assessment to provide specific evidence to provide, properly identify the restrictions needed for each individual lake. In addition, we respectfully request the deferring of any confirmation action to the change of Walton County Land Development Code regarding the regulations to the coastal dune lakes, which, until the study is complete. That's a recommendation that the Coastal Dune Lake Advisory Board presents to y'all again.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you.
Okay, it's time for other public comments in accordance with Policy 27. We're gonna allow 15 minutes with three minutes per person. Any public comments? Ms. Harris.
I'm the TDC. I have a couple of questions probably for Stan. At the last TDC Board meeting, Stan, I attended, there were two motions made by the board. One was to ask Clay Atkinson to find out about the MAXMAS study, and the other one was to ask for an auditor, for the auditor general to come in to do those books. So since y'all are gonna be on the front page of the Northwest Florida Daily News tomorrow again, I would like to know, are we doing anything about the letter that Clay was gonna send, and are we doing anything for the MAXMAS study? And did anybody ask, or does that have to come for y'all? Because I keep thinking that what the board does comes before y'all, but since it hasn't been brought up before y'all. That's question number one. I know I have three minutes. Question number two is, I would like to know what we're doing about, since we've not only, we kind of have gutted the TDC. And for those of us who pay the bed tax money that goes into it, we don't have a CEO anymore, and we don't have a head person which y'all are advertising for, a director, and I think we've lost two of our best advertising people. So I'd kind of like to have a game plan from Stan on exactly how we plan to fill all these positions before March, and I'd like to get them all advertised, and Gary Bremeyer's in the back. But I think some of us that pay the money are a little bit concerned that if we go to the TDC board and they pass things, and then it never gets to y'all, is it just being done, or is it just, did it just come to a screeching halt? I know Art Miller's in the back, who's on the TDC board, and Jim will remember the motions. So that's part of it. The second part is, since y'all were notified back in April about the bridge money and road money from Defuniac Springs, I just want to know why it's taken so long for us to do anything about it. And I think maybe, Mark, you ought to address that for the people so they're not just all shocked when it hits the front page tomorrow of the Defuniac Carol. And I have to wonder, if we had a CFO of the county, how all of this money is just somehow floating around, and we're going back to car wrecks.
I'll tackle the personnel question first, Ms. Harris. The community relations coordinator, her last day was Friday. That job is posted. I'm not sure exactly what date it closes. I believe sometime next, in the next couple of weeks. So we'll... So we'll be doing interviews moving forward with that. The executive director job vacancy was posted today. Currently working on the Director of Administration job description to get it out, get it posted as well. So that's the plan moving forward with your personnel questions.
For the executive director position. No, we've not made it that far in the process yet.
So we've advertised it internally as of today. In the next couple of days, it will go out nationally through DMAI, through FABMO, and through Visit Florida, and probably also Florida City and County Management Association websites and some of those mediums. I do believe that was taken out. I don't have it in front of me, but I believe we took that out, yes. And back to your question with the draft letter to be transmitted to the BCC and the Department of Revenue in regards to the TDT collections and the MAXMAS study. It's my understanding, and Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, that Mr. Atkinson's intent was to bring back to the TDC Council on the December 1st meeting, that draft of that letter, and take any comments and suggestions before transmission. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Sunday. The letter will be presented to the TDC Council, and will need to be executed by the TDC Chairman. It's not an advisory letter that comes up to you for you to transmit, it's a letter that the TDC will be transmitting. One letter to the DOR and to the Board of County Commissioners, addressing their concerns, as they've instructed me to draft it. Because I will need to be executed by a chairman, I want the board to approve the final version of that letter, so that will be presented at the December TDC meeting. Along with that will be what I've referred to, for my working purposes, as a cover letter that will be attached on top of that letter, that's going to go to the DOR and the BCC, to the Auditor General pursuant to the TDC's request that we send the same request to the Auditor General, to ask them to provide us any assistance on that matter as well. So both of those will be presented for review. I expect the first letter will be the one that will need the most comment, as the other is fairly straightforward cover letter. But that will be presented at the December 1st meeting, will be in the agenda packet for all board members to review, and then for them to vote on the final language attached to that before transmission.
Okay, thank you. Does that answer your questions? Ms. Harris.
And Stan, I have another question. I know there was something on the agenda for, to ask the Auditor General about it, if we could use money to pay for transit system. But there was another issue, Clay, that was a little bit different, and I think it was to ask the Auditor General if we could use TDC money for media to put on, and I know this, it would have to be an RFP, we can't just assume that one company's going to get it. But was that a recommendation or a desire that the TDC board had as well?
My understanding of what the TDC transmitted, we've had this issue of a transit system, trolley, tram, whatever we wish to call it, presented to the TDC in a number of fashions. There have been repeated concerns by the committee systems in the TDC, as well as our TDC Council, about actually funding the operation of a transit system. The most recent presentation that came before us in our October meeting was to address whether or not we could fund wrapping these trolleys as a form of in-market branding, or some type of promotion of the destination in-market, and whether that would be appropriate. One of the ongoing concerns was, would that be a permissible method if the TDC found that was appropriate marketing? Because this had gone up and down so many times over the last four years, maybe five years at this point, it's pretty much been near my entire tenure with the TDC, this issue's come up in some form or another. The TDC said, since it will ultimately be a legislative finding by the BCC, too far to the BCC to make that legislative determination. My opinion to the TDC Council at that time was certainly the BCC could ask the Attorney General for an opinion on that issue. My candid opinion as attorney for the TDC is that the Attorney General's really could come back and say, it's permissible if you make a legislative finding, that it will be for promotion or marketing of the destination. So really, I think what the TDC was asking was for the BCC to undertake that finding and make that legislative finding. That, at least, is my understanding of the TDC's action at the last meeting. And I know, I spoke to Chairman Norris about this as well. I don't know if he was able to make it tonight, but I believe that was, in my conversation with him, what he recalled the board trying to transmit up as well. Something may have gotten lost in translation there, though.
Yeah, that's what I remember as, as, well, if we're going to vote on this, and we're going to look at this, allocate money toward it, we need an AG opinion on it, whether it's doable or not. And then at that point, we would look at the next step, if we got the OK from the...
Or at least a legislative finding. See, it's either or. Mr. Hurd, if you feel more comfortable asking the AG for an opinion. We've asked for an informal opinion, we've asked an opinion before we got an informal answer.
It was on tonight's agenda. We adopted it to...
For the transit study, yes. I mean transit services, yes, ma'am.
For the, yeah, for the TDC slash trolley slash...
So I think that's the caveat, I think that's the little distinction there, and perhaps the request of the AG can be crafted to make sure it covers both the areas.
Or just do a separate one, since this one's already been approved.
Well, and you know, it was, I think it was directed toward marketing, use the marketing penny to finance the, and that was, that was the question.
As long as that's covered, that's really what the TDC's question was.
And to answer the question, yes, about the road and bridge tax, yes, Mr. Alford, and part of his controlling duties as, with the clerk of the court, did notify me by email, and we had discussions about the tax collector paying directly to the city of Defuniak Springs a portion of the adware tax at the county levees for quote-unquote road and bridges. Frankly, at the beginning, I thought it was a budget issue more than a legal issue. By middle part of July, it was pretty apparent that it was a legal issue. I did a ton of, spent a significant amount of time trying to determine what authority the tax collector had, determined that quite frankly, there was none, at least none since a statute had been repealed, and I think I briefed you guys in writing on this. A statute was repealed back in 1984 that had previously authorized this type of transfer, and immediately notified the administration and, I believe, the city attorney, I think I called and talked to Clay and Clayton, that we would have to have some written authorization from the commission to continue any kind of transfer. And so that would stop this year. Now, in terms of recovering funds, there's multiple, we're considering multiple fronts. Obviously, you know that we have sent out a demand letter to the auditor. We anticipate other possibilities on recovering the funds. I just, I'm not a big fan of discussing litigation strategy at a public meeting, but we certainly have other, we are looking at other alternatives on recovering some of the funds, or if not, it's hard to determine for sure how far we can go back, but we're certainly looking at those issues. We have not, we have not made a decision nor a recommendation to you yet, but we will do that.
Thank you. Mr. Alford, comment was made with regard to CFO, and since that's under your bailiwick, any comments you'd like to make?
No.
Okay, moving on. Mr. Hudson, I believe you had your hand up.
Good afternoon. For the record, my name is Bob Hudson, H-U-D-S-O-N. I'm the Executive Director of the Walton County Taxpayers Association. I have three issues that I, requests that I'd like to make. Three months ago, the President of the Walton County Taxpayers Association made a request to the Chair to facilitate a meeting between the Walton County Taxpayers Association and the county attorney, county administrator, to discuss. What we were trying to do was help people understand how you make public comments in an effective manner here, what the rules were, so we could educate, or help educate the public on that. I spoke with Larry after that, had some health issues, got a new nose, whatever you want to say. But anyway, since then, it's kind of been three months. It is something that I believe we need to do, and hopefully, Mr. Emfield, you can facilitate that by providing two or three dates that would, y'all would be available to me, and I'll transmit those to the President of the organization, Ms. Banks. Second thing is, I'd like to say that I stood before this group and discussed the grand jury report. The President of the organization presented some recommendations or requests to this board as to how and what we would like to see done. Mr. Emfield made a lot of comments, and each of you made comments concerning what you felt should be done. Since that point in time, I've been reading 41,000 pages of testimony, investigative testimony, not actual grand jury testimony. And it's very clear to me that there are some things that we believe should be addressed in a forthright and transparent and sunshine manner. I don't know whether any of you have availed yourself of those transcripts, or audios, or videos, but if you haven't, I'd invite you to do it. I'll even share them with you. Cost me a hundred bucks, but 84 gigabytes of data, it's a lot, it's there. So one of the requests that we made was that we have a workshop and someone who is going to carry us through the process, hopefully, of addressing those issues for the betterment of Walton County. Hopefully, y'all will address that in some shape, form, or fashion as we go forward. With that, there are some things that are very revealing within testimony of employees, very troubling as to how things occur or don't occur, and it would be our request that you do that. Last thing, someone said that was, the whole issue with the road and bridge was a witch hunt. It's obviously not a witch hunt, if you're asking somebody to demand, making demands of people for reimbursement. And someone also said that to not do that would bankrupt the city of Defuniak Springs. I've looked at their financial statements, the loss of $20,000 is not going to bankrupt the city of Defuniak Springs, and I know y'all are addressing that. And Larry Wilmer Stafford was looking at how extensive the roads are there, what we've done, and hopefully, that will come forward to us in the very near future.
Bob, we want to wrap up. Thank you. Other public comment? Yes, sir.
Hello, everybody. My name is Mario Hopson, it's O-B-S-T-B-A-U-M. I'm a resident of San Juan Avenue. And the reason I'm here is because we've heard lately of a proposal that was being made to possibly do a cut-through through our street into the forest through 395. And so a bunch of us here from 395, that, I'm sorry, from San Juan, that basically are totally opposed to this. Another thing that kind of bothers us a little bit is, because we overheard that, and again, it's hearsay, and I'm not sure how true this is, that there's been meetings between a certain person and...
Please, please address the board.
I'm sorry?
Please face this way and address the board.
Ms. McQuiston, and you guys, and the Forest Department. And we want to know if that's true, number one, okay? And where is this proposal going? Because we obviously need to stop it, because I think it's really crazy. This is a street that everybody loves, it's a very quiet street, okay, for the most part, just that every street can have some issues. But we love our street, we have wildlife running around like crazy, we have wildlife in my backyard, my front yard. So we basically want to stop this proposal, if it's around.
I don't know if there's anything in front of the board right now.
Yeah, I can, I can answer that question. I was notified that Bonnie McQuiston, Celeste Cabina, Cliff Nauer, and one of, and asked one of our Public Works people to go to the meeting with the state forest people to discuss a route through San Juan to the west through the forest. Now, I was not invited, I was not acknowledged, I mean, I was not, I heard about this after the fact. And so that meeting took place, I don't know what happened in that meeting. I didn't, I didn't authorize anyone from staff, my part, to go to that meeting. In fact, I told these ladies that I was opposed to going through neighborhoods with cut-throughs, and that's, that's, that's what happened, that's what, that's what came back to me. And so, yeah, I'm certainly not in favor of that as an alternative to the 38-395 intersection.
Commissioner, we don't have anything in front of the board for that, do we? So that's, that was, there's nothing presented to the board to even consider that?
No, but he brought it up, and he wanted to know, and that's, and that's what, no. But, but my understanding was that was going to be brought up tonight as well. So I don't know, it still may be, I don't know, but...
Was, I guess my issue is too, is was this proposal, have you guys heard of this proposal?
No.
No.
Okay.
Let me just reiterate too. What happens is, the Genesis study is being relooked at. They will make recommendations on many recommendations, you know, my, the ideal way is to go around development, to go, to try to protect the forest, to try to go on the edge of the forest. You know, we have Eagle's Nest along the power line, we, you know, we want to protect those, but, so until those recommendations come to us, I'm not in favor of looking, you know. Now, people can suggest to me, well, we want it here, we want it here, and I think that's good. I want to hear from constituents when I make my decision, but nothing has come before this board. I know, I started getting email after email, and I heard that there was flyers put on mailboxes, and I thought, good gracious, how did this get so out of hand? But anyway, that's the process. So be it these, nothing's going to happen that doesn't come before this board, we will make decisions as a board in transparency.
Okay, that's awesome.
But your District 5 Commissioner will not be supporting roads through single-family neighborhoods.
Thank you.
This man in the back.
My name is Elizabeth Elliott, I also live in Gulf Shore Manor, and I live on San Juan. Mario is my neighbor, and many of the others here are neighbors. When we were advised by Commissioner Meadows that something was brewing, we did mobilize, and we wanted our opinions heard. Mario has stated the issues, you've all said that now you're aware that there's this kind of thing. I would say one thing about the Genesis report, that it does recommend avoiding neighborhoods, going for low impact, and there's many, many things, if that study is followed, would immediately negate even consideration of a neighborhood like Gulf Shore Manor, or any others along the way. Toward that end, I believe very much in documents, written words, so we have several of us in the neighborhood gotten together and written up various points that should be considered, and we have also not just complained, but given you solutions, because it's always good to have solutions. And I would like to give this, so that this is an attachment to the business.
Please present them to the clerk.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other? All right, we're going to move into planning development. Does the board need a break before we go there? I got one shaking in the head, yes. A very short 10-minute break at 5:15 will reconvene.
Matt Carpenter for the Planning Department. We have a little bit of a change in our order this afternoon. We'd like to request that item number three, the Request to Approve Final Order for Gulf Place Lots 19 and 20, staff is requesting that this item be continued.
Do we have a date certain, or just continue at this point?
We'd like to continue to the first meeting of December.
Are you sure? Because I asked last time, shouldn't we continue, and you said, oh, no, this is fine. So, I mean, I'm not begging you, but to be totally sure, do we need to move it till January?
I think December 8th will be good.
All right.
Be good.
So moved.
Motion in a second.
Any further board discussion? Any public comment? Mr. Theriac, is this agreeable with you?
No objections, no objections.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Now, to item number one under tab L, we'd like to request the board to schedule and advertise a public hearing to be held December eighth, two thousand and fifteen, to consider the stormwater policies ordinance that was previously heard at first reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further board discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
And that will be scheduled as an adoption hearing, if it be the will of the board. Item number two, request to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the agreement for services with Seaside Institute, Inc., for the County Road Thirty A Transportation Alternative Study. That's a study funded by the DEO Thirty A Alternatives Grant.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further board discussion? Any public comment? Yes, sir. Come to the microphone.
I've followed this process for a short period of time and was quite impressed with all the effort put into the study, and the results are the suggestions made for the county, and I am in full support of it.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. We'll move to tab M Legislative Items. And the first item we have is a request to approve by ordinance the Sandeston Market Shops E2 change to their development order, and Renee Bradley will introduce this item.
Good evening, Renee Bradley, Walton County Planning and Development. Old Bridge Park Sandeston LLC is requesting change to land use on parcel one sixteen within the Sandeston DRI from administration to commercial on two-point-two acres consisting of a thirteen thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-five square-foot building. This parcel is located south of U.S. Highway ninety-eight at the Market Shops. By Florida statute, this is a three-eighty-oh-six nineteen E2 amendment, and it's a non-substantial deviation changed to the development order for Sandeston, which has been confirmed by a letter dated October the eighth, two thousand and fifteen, from Anna Richmond, Department of Economic Opportunity. The applicant has provided a traffic analysis for the amendment, which has been reviewed by the county's traffic consultant. The applicant will be required to pay a total of eighty thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy dollars in proportional fair share for this amendment. There are no code violations on this property. Staff has received no public comment on this ordinance amendment, and staff finds that this is not a substantial deviation and recommends approval based upon the applicant paying the proportional fair share amount due.
Commissioners, before this goes forward, I need to recuse myself as part of the ongoing thing with regard to Sandeston DRI. I have a business conflict, and therefore, I have passed the gavel to Commissioner Commander.
And I would also like us to make note for the public that it is not part of Mr. Becknell's property, so it actually has nothing to do with the NOPC, it is a separate...
That is absolutely correct, Commissioner.
I want to make sure of that. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second. Does anyone in the audience have any comments? Come forward, sir, state your name and spell it for the record, please.
My name is Martin Minns, M-I-N-N-S. I live in Merrimack Beach in Sandeston. Is this change anticipating change in construction? If so, could you give, is there any suggestions what this is about? Why are we making this change at this time?
It is my understanding that they're changing it from the rental office, from where people used to come in and check in before they went, you know, to the Hilton or wherever, and it's now being changed to a shops, a commercial.
Now, that's not the parcel that's being considered here. This parcel is, that is the other end, which is now becoming a medical facility of some sort. This particular parcel already is a commercial area.
No, sir. I'm sorry, it used to be an administrative office, you know, and where they used to check in, and it is, and they're wanting to change it to commercial. Renee, would you like to speak to that as well, please?
Sir, let me see you, ma'am. The parcel that we're actually changing is the one sixteen here. Okay?
Thank you, sorry, ma'am.
You're certainly welcome, sir. Anyone else, any comments? Commissioners?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like so?
Please.
Mr. Carpenter.
Commissioners, the next item we have is number two under tab M. This is a request to approve an ordinance called the Bayou Breeze Large-Scale Amendment, project number fifteen zero-zero-seven zero-zero-zero-five. It's being reviewed by Vivian Schamel, and she will introduce it.
This is an application from Bayou Breeze Developers requesting to amend the Walton County Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map Designation on approximately ten acres from Conservation Residential, two units per acre, to Business Park. It is located on the west side of Old Blue Mountain Road, approximately quarter-mile north of Old Blue Mountain Road and U.S. Highway ninety-eight intersection. Proposed amendment to the comp plan provides a logical development pattern, meets the location criteria for Business Park, and does not contravene the goals, objectives, and policies of the Walton County Comprehensive Plan. No comments have been received on the proposed amendment as of the date of this report. It was heard at the October Planning Commission and was passed on unanimously requesting approval, or recommending approval. The history of the property is that it was designated CR two-to-one back in nineteen ninety-six. There's conservation and public facilities that abut the property on three sides, while Town Center One is located east of the site. Old Blue Mountain Road has an established light industrial park located on two parcels north of the subject parcel. So, the proposed amendment would be consistent with the comprehensive plan and the Land Development Code. I don't really have anything else to add to that. Do you have any questions?
What's wishes of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any board comments? Any public comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Just a question on that. Does the Regional refuse to complete the county analyzing the current capacity of the facilities? Did I see that?
What?
It's in the ECM report, and it doesn't have a page number. It's like item F about the water and sewer, it's under the compatibility and analysis, it's kind of at the end, and it says, it says, note, Regional Utilities refuse to complete the county form analyzing the current capacity of their facilities. I just thought that was kind, I just wanted to make sure I was reading that correctly.
Yes, please.
Mr. Viner?
Darryl Barnhill, the ECM Engineers, representing Bayou Breeze. Regional has developed their own forms for response to county request, and so, they sent us their response to that, and they said that was adequate to answer the county's request. And I'm not trying to cause a problem, that was just their response.
I just wondered about, okay. That's what I just wondered about, yeah. Okay, that's it.
Mac? Ready for QJ?
Have we voted yet?
I thought we just took, did we?
We didn't vote.
Did we vote?
No.
Yes, it passed, yes.
Oh, we did? Yeah, 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 we voted, yeah.
Would you like to vote again?
Tell us, okay.
Can we get the same vote?
Okay. All right, Q James, Davis, do you need to swear anybody in?
Anyone who anticipates testifying on any item before the board on these case judicial matters, would you please stand and raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this board will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you. When you come to the podium, please state your name, spell your last name, and let us know that you have been sworn. Also, is there any ex parte contacts that any commissioners received that they have not turned in to the clerk of court?
I've turned them in.
Everybody's turned them in. There we go. And is there any reason you could not render a fair and impartial decision based on those ex parte contacts? All are indicating no. Is there any objections to any notices for tonight's case judicial hearings? Hearing none. Mr. Carpenter.
Commissioners, this is number four under the QJ section of our agenda, the request to approve by final order Artisan Square PUD Major Development. It's project number fourteen dash zero-zero-one zero-zero-two-four-three, was reviewed by Tim Brown. It's a major development order application submitted by Henderson Engineering and Consulting. This development proposes approval of five residential lots and fifteen thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-six square feet of commercial and restaurant use on three-point-zero-two-four acres with a future land use of traditional neighborhood development. It's located on County Road three-ninety-five in Point, Washington.
Eden Drive.
And Eden Drive, at the intersection of three-ninety-five and Eden Drive. This project has changed significantly since its original conception. I believe they've worked very closely with members of the community, including the Historical Society, to have local community participation in the development of this particular property. Traditional neighborhood development typically requires a mixture of uses if it's more than five acres, and it's a conditional approval by the board for the applicant to be able to relax that requirement and have less than a mixture of three uses. That is one of their requests. In addition to that, there's some other specific mixtures of uses and sizes of those uses contained in the Land Development Code for this particular land use category, and it makes it pretty difficult to develop that on a small site. But those requirements are as follows, and these are requested deviations. Each plan must provide for a minimum of five percent of the neighborhood area or three acres, whichever is greater, to be designated for public use. In this particular case, the applicant's requesting a deviation which amounts to slightly less than twenty percent of the project compared to five percent, but the area only totals point-six-zero acres. So, they're asking to be relieved from the minimum of three acres and allow that use on point-zero-six acres. The next deviation, the plan must provide for a minimum of two percent or one acre, and may provide up to twenty percent of the project area in a commercial center. In their particular application, the application is requesting a deviation to allow a maximum of fifty-point-eight-nine percent as compared to the twenty percent for the commercial center. A third deviation requested is each plan must include front streets with parallel parking for commercial centers and with sidewalks which are a minimum of ten feet wide. In this case, the applicant is requesting a deviation to use the existing fronted streets, three-ninety-five and Eden Drive, without providing parallel parking and the proposed ten-foot sidewalks for the commercial center. The applicant is here and is available for additional questions or to describe their project further.
Before we get there, I've got a question about a comment you just made. You said there have been considerable changes made. Has that been since it's been in front of the Planning Commission?
I think they have met since the Planning Commission. There were significant changes between the pre-application TRC and the Planning Commission.
Okay, but what about since the Planning Commission approved it? Have there been significant changes? I know we got an email today, all the commissioners got an email today, about some other changes that have been made. Is this something that should go back to the Planning Commission?
No, sir, I don't think so at this point.
There's no request for any increased intensity or density?
No.
Okay.
Let me ask a question too. I'm now confused because the application says five residential lots and land, and then another place it says six residential lots. So, is it five or six?
I think it's five.
It's five?
Yes, ma'am. Five residential lots on the east end of the property.
Okay, and then... Okay, that was one of my questions.
I have a number of questions. Number one, if you're taking the parking, the parallel parking off, where is it going? Number two, I'll just fire them off. I got this email this afternoon after I left my office, haven't had time to look at it. You know, we had said over and over, we shouldn't be sent stuff the night when we're trying to make a decision. I do have a real heartburn with the fifty percent of the commercial center, you know, being moved up to fifty from twenty percent. How are they going to buffer from the neighborhoods, from the neighbors to keep things quiet? What's the time of operation of, is this commercial center going to be? Is it going to be operated at night? And my last one is saving the trees. I noticed one on here that is to be demolished, it's got to be over two-hundred years old. I'm not a tree hugger, but I'd stand there and hold that thing before I'd let you cut it down. I mean, that tree has been here since, you know, before this country was founded, and all of a sudden, we're cutting down a tree for a building. I would love to see kind of a move and adjusted in there, sir.
There might be some room to work on this. The applicant would like to speak to all of these issues.
Is there, let me ask you about the county ordinance. Is there a county, does the Point Washington plan, neighborhood plan, include any preservation of heritage trees or anything like that?
Yes, ma'am, it does. This particular development qualifies for an exemption from the protected trees, and this is item two, exemptions subsection B, development. The intended allowable use of the site cannot be reasonably developed in accordance with the Land Development Code because protected trees are located within areas necessary for a structure or infrastructure purposes. So, there is an opportunity for an exemption, but you might want to discuss that with the applicant.
Who sent the email? Who sent the...
Ty Smith. Ty Smith or Simpson?
Sims.
Simpson.
Just, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Chapman.
Mac, I know we've all received initially an email from the neighborhood in support, and then that was subsequently removed because of all the deviations they were requesting. Now, again, if they've made some changes, we need to know about it, but I'd like to know from the community, the people that live in there, what their feeling is on the changes that are made, and that may come at a later date, Mr. Chairman. Now, I'm not fond of using three-ninety-five or Eden Road for any type of parking for a private entity that's going in. So, that may have been taken off the table.
Yes, sir, that parking was added for traffic calming purposes by the applicant. It is not required for their uses.
Okay, and I guess to the applicant, so y'all can see my eyes, this is three-point-oh-six-one acres, I believe, and you've got this massive project, you want to stick on three acres. When you went and looked at this land and purchased this land, did you have any idea this is the project you would want to put on it, knowing that it was already undersized to do what you wanted to do, and then come to this board and ask for deviations to make it work for y'all?
The applicant would like to address that, please.
Good evening. My name's John Henderson, Henderson Engineering, H-E-N-D-E-R-S-O-N. The first deviation, the public space, we're required to have a minimum five percent of the neighborhood area or three acres, whichever is greater, in public space. We're well over the five percent, but since the property's only three acres, we can't provide the three acres, whichever is greater. We can't provide three acres of public space on a three-acre project.
Understood, but if you look at...
So, that's one of the deviations.
I know, that's why you want the deviation, but before you went and put your money down on that piece of property, you should have known that instead of coming in here and asking this board to change it and give you that deviation when it has some effect or has an effect upon that neighborhood plan that's been in effect for years.
Well, that doesn't affect the neighborhood plan. We're well under the neighborhood, the Point Washington Neighborhood Plan, we're well under the impervious surface ratio, we're well under the floor area ratio.
But are you not, you're not under it here on that particular...
That's the Land Development Code, that's the traditional neighborhood development requirements in the Land Development Code. The TND... The TND requirements are for large parcels, typically forty acres or bigger. Now, all of Point Washington, I've got the land use map, this whole area is TND, and there's a lot of parcels under forty acres. So, I mean, the deviations or variances, that's really the only method or the only avenue to make this property developable. Otherwise, you just, it's not developable. Now, the commercial center, we are asking for a lot greater commercial center than the TND requirements allowed. We're asking for about fifty percent, the TND requirements allow twenty percent, but we're about two hundred and fifty percent under the floor area ratio. So we're not asking for any more commercial square footage, we're just spreading it out a little bit more. If we all put it all in six tenths of an acre, the thirteen thousand square feet or so, it would just be a massive building, it wouldn't really fit the character of the Point Washington. So we're not asking for any more square footage, we're just spreading it out a little bit more. The other deviation is for the parallel parking on the street. We don't need that parking, that was extra, that's not part of, required for the development. The TND requirements require parallel parking on the front streets. Well, initially, we put it on the front streets, we had some public comment about the traffic comment effects, but the public's comment overall was that they didn't want any parallel parking. So we'll take it off, we don't need the parallel parking, but the TND requirements require parallel parking. So we need a deviation, basically on behalf of the community, to not put parallel parking in the right of ways. So those are the three deviations that we need.
I think the, I think the, I think you're reading that incorrectly. I think it says each plan must include front streets with parallel parking. It doesn't say must be allowed to parallel park on public right of ways. That means that you provide the frontage road and you provide the parking off of your frontage road, not a county road, that's what that means, and with sidewalks, so that you get your parking and your traffic off of the county roads, and that, and that helps, that helps parking, it helps traffic, it helps congestion, and it requires you to put, the onus is on you, on your property, to do that. And so, and so you have, I don't know, I don't know which plan y'all are...
We do have off-street parking.
You don't have front-street parking though.
No, we don't have additional front streets.
What that's saying is that, that you, that what they're looking for is frontage roads with, you bring a frontage road in and you parallel park off of it, and you, and you provide a commercial, like a commercial city street. That's what TND is actually about. This is a parking lot with a little cluster of buildings here and there and everywhere. It really, it doesn't, it doesn't meet that, it doesn't meet that standard of the front, the front-street parking. So I don't know which plan, that, the plan in my book, is that the plan that we're looking at? The site plan, is it the plan in the book? It is? Okay.
Okay, so, and my other question was, there's five lots, but your compatibility study says single-family residences and guest houses, and so it says five single-family lots with guest houses. My question is, how many guest houses, and are they gonna be contritae cottages, just like...
No, it would be a home and a carriage house.
A home and a carriage house. So I don't think, so that's a question I have, is, is that a, is that a variance from the, no, it isn't? Okay, so you would have a maximum of two houses on each lot, correct?
John, let me add to that.
Hold on, you swore, I saw you come in.
I'm sorry. Pat Blackshear, President of Blackshear Planning.
Sure. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this board will be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. And Pat, do you represent the applicant?
I vote the compatibility announces for the applicant, yes.
Yeah, Pat, and in here it says five single-family lots with guest houses, so how many total houses was there?
Code provides for one per lot. Anyone in this county can have a guest home, but there are thresholds on maximum square footages, so we were just...
Can they rent the guest home?
No, no, these are, these are to be guest homes.
They can't rent the guest home, so we've been through just before, so the guest home has to be occupied by a member of the family, correct? Matt?
Be rented.
Be rented.
It's a family member.
Okay.
He cannot be rented separately from the main house of the non-family.
Okay, well, I'm just concerned about moving a bunch of contritae cottages in there because I know that the applicant is, he's big on contritae cottages, and I just wanna make sure that, I just wanna make sure that, you know, you don't get a house and then cram a bunch of cottages in there, which a lot of people have started trying to do that, as Matt knows, we've got two or three. So I just wanna make sure that this is compatible with the neighborhood and you don't cram a bunch of little tiny cottages in there and call them guest homes.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, can we make sure that this is not a deviation, that anyone in the county can have a guest home, and that my report is addressing what is provided by code?
Okay.
Commissioner Chapman.
Mr. Henderson, I'm looking at a site plan and a, I picked my packet here, it's exhibit F, and I count, read it right, six lots, and then look at this one over here on page C five eight, and there's five. Which one is...
It's five, that was part of the compatibility report. Unfortunately, that didn't get updated, that exhibit. It's five lots.
One, two, three, four, you can't get two houses in one lot?
Mr. Chairman Allison Field, we need to accept the staff report into evidence, we had not done that, if you don't...
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's approved. Commissioners, other questions?
I guess I'm with Commissioner Meadows, I don't see how you can get five houses and then five guest houses, which is ten, on, and commercial, fifty percent of this commercial, on three acres, and streets, and sidewalks, and drainage?
And parking.
And who?
And parking.
And parking, yeah.
We're well under the density and the floor area ratio and the impervious surface ratio.
But that's not how the TND thing reads. It reads, it reads that a, you know, you're twenty percent of the project area in commercial center. It doesn't say anything about FAR, it's a percentage of commercial.
Well, there's a FAR within that.
Well, I'm sure there is, but...
And impervious surface ratio.
But you're asking for a deviation, so if there's an FAR in there that you comply with, then why would you need a deviation to...
We're well under the FAR.
Well, that's, you're asking for a deviation, though, to the percentage of project area that's commercial. It says nothing about FAR and all that in this requested deviation. You are asking for double what you're supposed to be putting on this three-acre TND site, and I'm totally against that as well. I think we have too many, too many traffic problems, too many parking problems, to go ahead and start increasing, giving deviations to plans that, that just for the sake of, you know, giving them out, so...
Okay, Commissioner Chapman.
Mr. Henderson, and looking at this, where's your stormwater retention at?
There's several, several places. There's stormwater up along three ninety-five, there's some stormwater along Eden Drive, and there's some stormwater behind the gravel parking lot, block D, I believe that is. There's several, it's scattered out several places along the site.
Commissioner Commander.
That was my question, I had, you know, it doesn't...
It's been approved by TRC.
Is it, is the stormwater within the, within the side yard easements of the residential properties?
Yes, it is in two, three of the lot lines.
Yeah, that's, that's something that we're, we're looking at now, is people fill those in.
Well, they have to be within drainage easements, and there are drainage easements shown on this, and there will be easements shown on the platte when we come to have a platte.
Right, but when somebody buys a lot, that drainage easement doesn't show up on that lot when they're out there, and they fill it, and they fill it in.
Yeah, but the DEP or the Water Management District has made new requirements. They require now that projects that have been permitted, they have to be inspected annually by a civil engineer, registered civil engineer, and they have to be tested every three years by registered civil engineers. So all that filling in the swales, that's gonna go away. Anything permitted from now on won't, they won't get filled in.
Once you build this project and move on, who's gonna pay for all that?
There'll be an association set up, and that's also part of the DEP permitting requirements. You have to set up an association, and you have to collect dues, and part of those dues have to go to the stormwater maintenance. That's part of your DEP stormwater permit.
So what happens if you don't do that? DEP comes out and what, shuts you down?
Well, they actually make you do financial provisions, like now for exfiltration, they're making you post bonds in some instances, because they say that's got a ten-year lifespan.
Any other questions before we take public...
Mr. Carpenter alluded to the fact, Simone, that you had worked it out so that you did not have to cut the big trees down?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. We, the building, it's block C, we can massage that building, there's a large tree on both ends of it, like twenty-eight, thirty-inch diameter tree. We've committed to the community that, I believe, I've got a tree protection plan, let me see if I can read this. Protected trees eighteen inches diameter or greater, there's twenty-six on site. The ones out of those to be removed, we're gonna remove four pines, and we're gonna save twenty-two oaks and pines on the site. Now, some of those are gonna require provisions to work around them. Most of them, we've put the buildings, laid out the buildings and stuff to avoid them. Most of them are on like lot lines or in setbacks in the yards. There's a couple of them in the yards that will require, you know, some design around them and stuff, but we also wanted to make the community part of the ARB so they can ensure that the trees are being protected.
Well, on sheet number L one hundred here, you have an X on this thirty-foot oak here, and down here the X says trees to be removed. That's the one I'm particularly interested in, that one?
Yes, yes, ma'am, we're gonna save it, absolutely.
Kim, did you get that? Thank you. Because once it's cut down, it's hard to put it back.
Yeah, yeah, it's gone.
I wanna go over that commercial center one more time, if I can, that deviation. We're asking for a lot more area in commercial center, it's about two hundred and fifty percent the size. We're asking for half an acre, we're allowed two tenths an acre. However, our floor area ratio is only point two, we're allowed point five. That's under the Point Washington plan, it's point six under the Land Development Code. So we're two hundred and fifty percent less on our floor area ratio. So our building area in that commercial center is the same, we're not asking for any more building, square footage, we're just asking to spread it out a little bit more. We don't wanna go vertical to two-story buildings. We wanna keep it more the flavor of Point Washington, so that's why we're spreading it out. We're not asking for more building square footage.
Well, you're asking for a deviation to one of the rules of the TND project, no matter how you slice and dice it, you are requesting a deviation to allow a maximum of fifty, almost fifty-one percent for the commercial center, which turns out to be fifteen thousand four hundred and fifty-six square feet, when I think the neighborhood is saying that nine thousand square feet is what they agreed upon on the conditions of approval, from what I can tell from this email.
Well, we may massage things tonight, we're gonna get some input from the public. What we're, what I'm answering and what we're talking about now is the plan that we had approved by the planning commission that was approved by TRC. There's been a lot of discussions and stuff, and you know, we've tabled this, you know, a few times to try to get with the community and everything, so they've got some input, and maybe we need to hear from them now, and maybe we'll work on this and see how much square footage we have at the end of the night.
We're gonna let the commissioners continue with any questions they have before we hear from the public.
I'd rather not design a project in a meeting, I'd rather have them come back with the plans and show it what they're gonna do and what they're not gonna do, and definitely hear from the homeowners, but designing a project in a BCC meeting is not my idea of a good way to spend our time.
Okay, you're gonna get your wish. I'm gonna let the public come up, you'll have a chance to redress that after they've spoken.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Sir, come on up, please state your name, spell your name for the record, and have you been sworn?
I have not been sworn.
Please come in. Say your full name.
Hi, James Michael Foley.
Behind the Foley. Behind the...
James Michael Foley.
Mr. Foley, do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this board will be the truth?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Would you please spell your last name for the record?
F O L E Y.
Thank you.
My name is James Foley, I live in Point Washington, I've lived there about thirty-two years. I'm the president of the Historic Association, and let me make one thing perfectly clear, the Historic Association does not represent everybody that lives in Point Washington. Reason I mention this is because we created a heck of a storm when the Historic Association endorsed this plan before the Planning and Zoning Board, and then several people, mostly people that had moved in, really never knew of our organization or the implications of, you know, what was going on in future development. They certainly didn't know our history for fighting developers most of the time. But at any rate, we have looked at the new plan, the Historic Association, in conjunction with several, I would call them kingpins, in the outer community that originally were against the plan, and we've had several meetings sparing you folks just a tonny of your time. We got most of the screaming and shouting done in a series of meetings at the Methodist Church, but I think we've come to a pretty decent compromise. Could I have permission to approach?
You may pass something to the clerk.
Oh, okay.
Well, can I ask you about this email from Ty Sims about one through seven and their request to y'all, kind of at a meeting this morning, I guess? Did y'all agree to all of those things?
We were not present, that was between Ty Sims and his group and the developer. We met, we had our meeting night before last, and this is the letter that, we emailed it all to you, but I wanted all of y'all to have a copy, just so I, when I read it, you'll understand where we're coming from.
And Mr. Chairman, you don't have to take a vote, but Mr. Foley is a member of the public offering written evidence, so, Mr. Chairman, would you accept that into evidence? It's accepted, thank you.
Thank you.
And Kim, we'll mark it as, okay, gotcha.
All right, I'll just read it out loud, y'all have a copy. Dear Board Members, Historic Point Washington Association Incorporated was incorporated to help preserve the character, scale, architecture of open spaces. In order to achieve this purpose, Point Washington Neighborhood Plan was established, and that's on file with the Planning and Zoning Board. We did that about five years ago. Neighborhood, commercial, live-work units and public uses should be designed to fit within the scale of the land and be compatible with the historic character while minimizing the effect of the, to the residential areas. All parking for neighborhood, commercial, for live-work units should be located within the property boundaries and be contained off-road ways. On a horn, the development of Artisan Square has encouraged community input in this project in using the neighborhood plan and the pattern book as guidelines. This project... This project does meet the criteria of the neighborhood plan and we suggest acceptance of this project." Uh, I'm not quite sure how to do this. Uh, now, I'm speaking as the, uh, president of the Historic Association and I was authorized by the executive board to present this letter. However, I have some personal comments. Can I step outside that role or should I sit back down and, and be recognized again?
Well, no, you, it's time now to provide your testimony and the applicant's gonna have a chance to respond to your testimony.
Okay, so I, I should speak?
You're on.
Okay, I'm on. Thank you very much, okay.
Let me ask one last question. Does the executive board have the right to speak for all the members?
Uh, we had a vote, uh...
The executive board?
Uh, yeah.
Uh, do you have the right to vote and speak for all the members of the Historic Society?
That is exactly why I'm saying I want to speak as a citizen at this point.
That doesn't answer...
All I have done is delivered...
That doesn't answer my question, though. Do, do y'all as a board have the right to make unilateral decisions and to stand up before the Board of County Commissioners and say that all your members, uh, are in agreement with you?
At our last, now, I don't know exactly how that works. I hear where you're coming from, but at our last meeting...
Okay.
We email every single person on there and if they have any objections, then they contact our secretary and we bring it up at the next meeting.
Okay, well, that, yeah, that, that answers my question. I, I don't know how much validity this really has 'cause it sounds like it's, it's an executive board and if you don't know the byli, by, by what, uh...
Bylaws.
Laws.
Bylaws.
Bylaws, bylaws of the, uh, organization, whether you have the right to vote and speak on behalf of them, that, that to me is, is kind of an issue because, you know, a lot of people can stand up and say, "I represent all these people," but all these people may not have a clue that...
That was exactly my, my statement. I said that we do not, that our, we do not represent everyone and that's why we invited other groups to come and speak at this meeting.
Okay, but yet, but yet you have a letter here that's signed by you saying pretty much, the Historic Point Association pretty much says this meets it and we, we accept it. So you're, you're basically representing them as president, saying that the Historic Point Washington Society approves, is, is in agreement.
At our last executive board meeting, we took a vote and, uh, only the, you know, there were other people there, certainly, um, but it, our vote, I believe, was six to two, perhaps, uh, that we would endorse the commercial component of this. It, it is in our neighborhood plan.
But, but not, not at this, not at this, um, percentage. I mean, not at this square footage. It may be in your neighborhood plan for commercial, but not, not at double the amount that, that they're allowed to have in a TND land use. Um, you see what I mean? I mean, it, yeah, I, I agree that they probably approved commercial, but not fifteen thousand square feet of commercial. Each site is probably site-specific.
Okay, um, I hear where you're coming from. I feel like we're splitting hairs a bit and, and I can resent, I, I mean, I'll take the letter back if you want, but...
Well, no, I just was making a statement about trying to figure out who actually was in favor, 'cause, 'cause I know last time, and I, last time, the, the letter came, like you said, there was a lot of discussion about it that didn't represent people and then, you know, then it came back and went back and forth, so there is a little bit of...
Right, of history there.
Cloud.
My favorite too.
Cloud over the letter.
Uh, quickly, just to, uh, address exactly what you're talking about, yes, we did endorse the, uh, commercial component, um, and we sent a letter to that effect and then a, a lot of people in the community who, uh, were not members of the Historic Association got very upset and in hindsight, uh, I certainly understand where they were coming from. They felt that they had moved it to a, um, a residential neighborhood and that, uh, they would be forever protected and, and here's the Historic Society saying, "Wow, we like it. We like commercial."
Do, do you approve of the deviation, their deviation request to double?
That, that's exactly why I asked permission to speak as a citizen, because speaking as a citizen, I can, I can give you my ideas, but I don't want to speak as if I'm representing everyone. The only thing that I represent is what's in this letter right here. Okay, now I can speak as a citizen? Yes, sir?
Ms. Foley. I, I wanna just clarify some stuff for myself. September third, 2015, uh, you sent up a letter on behalf of the Historic Society there, saying that y'all withdrew your support, basically, for the original proposal that went in.
That is correct.
That's from the August, that's, uh, behind the August sixth letter where you were in agreement, then on September the third, you're not in agreement and now November the third, 2015, you just handed to the board that y'all suggest acceptance of this project.
You're missing about, um, five or six meetings that we had with the entire neighborhood.
I understand that. All I can go by is what I've been presented here, okay?
Exactly.
So, as of, right now, the Historic Point Washington Society is in agreement of this project. Is that a fair statement or...
That is correct.
Okay. However, there are other entities within that district that may or may not agree with y'all's point of view.
That is correct.
Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
And I assume there are others out there tonight that will speak and maybe represents that other point.
We'll get there. Now, please make your personal comments.
Thank you. Okay, real quick, uh, about the turn of the century, Point Washington had a store, two lumber mills, a shingle mill, a boat-building place, um, a rooming house, a tavern, um, it was a, a landing for the ferry, uh, the only school, basically, it was the hub of all activity in South Walton County. Uh, now, this is what we've been using as a model, um, some of us old timers, um, looking at the way it was and how we might, uh, include commercials into it so that we can have services. Anybody that's familiar with Point Washington, we've had just a terrible time with the traffic. There's one way in and one way out and, and we want it to stay that way. Other folks have tried to cut, come up with ways to cut roads back into it. We don't want that. So the only solution, uh, for us to have a viable working community, uh, is to have services, i.e. a store, maybe a barber shop, I don't know, a dentist could have a place there. Um, it's a, it's a bigger area than a lot of people would think because it includes dogettes, um, other areas. We don't wanna be dragging a bunch of tourists. That was one of the biggest complaints we got, that you're trying to turn it into a tourist haven. That isn't what we want at all. We can't do it. There's not enough parking, anything like that, but it certainly would be, uh, a beautiful little southern hamlet where people could walk, ride a bike, whatever, uh, to get to the services. And that's the way we originally saw, uh, Mr. Horn's, um, first, uh, phase development. We looked at it and we went, "Wow, there's a country store." We talked about something like the Red Bay Store, um, just a small place where you get a paper and a cup of coffee and the staples so you don't have to stand in line to cross ninety-eight in the middle of the morning. And that's happening right now because of the schools. Uh, as a matter of fact, we fought to redesign the traffic loop down there in front of Bay School. Uh, we've got two churches and three schools and it's just a madhouse. Uh, services are what we need and we see that a project like this with small commercial to meet the locals for that, you know, for want of a better word, uh, we like that type of thing. In our neighborhood plan of five, maybe six years ago, after long discussion, um, we decided, yes, we do need commercial again or we're gonna be, you know, shopping outside the, the town all the time. Uh, any rate, so that's where we've been coming from for a number of years and I, uh, to address, um, Ms. Meadows' comment about the, uh, the square footage and the, and the plan and everything, I'm telling you, we've been dealing with this for years. Like Point Washington is not Blue Mountain, it's not, uh, seaside, uh, and I, I don't see how, I, I feel bad for the Planning and Zoning Board, how they take everything and one-size-fits-all, they're gonna shoehorn this into that. Uh, at one point, it was forty-acre plots and, and the designation for what goes on there that, uh, uh, this developer was trying to work to. That's why they're asking for variations and I really think, just to keep the traffic down, we're gonna have to realize that, that one-size doesn't fit all and that any developer that's gonna bring commercial anywhere close to the people that need it is gonna have to have variations. Uh, now, that's just me and there's, like you said, there's several people here that might disagree with me, uh, but we have had several meetings, um, with the people who originally were against it and I think we've come up with a compromise and I really haven't had anybody call me and cuss me up in, I don't know, about a week now. It's pretty cool.
Thank you. We've got a people... Mr. Day.
Frank, Day, I have been sworn. Put a little perspective on this and, excuse me, let me drop my hearing down just a bit of amplifying back. Uh, what Mr. Foley's describing, I think there's some confusion with regards to the various entities that have, have voiced opinions here. Um, Historic Point Washington Association, when it was formed, uh, put out letters to everybody in the overall community to ask if they wanted their properties included. We got all that input and drew the boundaries of the Historic Point Washington Association that included those that wanted to be part of it. Now, what happened, uh, and to ask, uh, answer Mr. Chapman's, uh, questions regarding the timeframe of when we had approved, sent approval from the Historic Point Washington Association and withdrew that subsequent. In that timeframe, we heard from, after our initial approval was from our board, we then heard from some of those members in the outlying community that is not included in the Historic Point Washington overlay boundary. So, at that point, we also were confronted with or presented with these deviation requirements and they were quite lengthy. So, at that point, we had a discussion with the developer and he agreed then to less, uh, it was a joint agreement between his associate, his, uh, or himself and our organization to withdraw those approvals so that we could get back on the drawing board. Quite frankly, I've never seen a developer more willing to work with the community and in his words, I'll quote, "Build what you want." That's what he asked us to do. So we withdrew our approval, brought in all the organizations or members of the greater community that isn't in our Historic Point Washington overlay district and expanded the conversation into the entire Point Washington area, which, uh, if you follow the boundary of our organization, that I drew a boundary for a social media page, includes everything from Little's Bio to, to, uh, include Christian International to the east. So we expanded this discussion out into the greater community and brought all this input and this is what it, it involved several discussions. Uh, the plan, as you see on the board here, is, has been drastically revised, but it's been revised down in density. All this commercial you see now is just on the corner of Eden Drive, uh, what he's, uh, got, uh, may I hold this up? This is what we're looking at. Let's see, yeah. It'd be kinda tough to describe it like it is, like that, but anyway, in the bottom-left corner of your screen, this is what he's asking for now. All the remainder of it will be residential development. That is the compromise plan that our overall community came to with the developer and, uh, thus the letter of our support, uh, here tonight.
So, Frank, um, if, if those pieces on to the north, those big boxes are gonna be residential, where are they gonna park?
Now, those, those drawings you see there...
Yeah. It's almost too tiny to say here.
Commissioner Meadows, I think we've got some drawings that was gonna be handed out.
That's, that's gonna be a residential lot. That will be let, residential lot one. So however they configure their final, uh, drawing on that house, then the parking will likely come off of three ninety-five for that property.
That would make six lots, though, right? Wouldn't that make six lots? Um, and they said they just had five lots. So down here is what it is.
Frank. Yep, yep. I, I, I think we're getting a little ahead of ourselves. Some of the community and the developer have met this morning and, uh, we've been going on and on and on with this and, and they've got some more revisions.
Could y'all, could y'all do that again and come back with a, with a plan that we, that, I mean, this is just getting absurd, if, in my opinion.
We were hoping we could get approved for a certain amount of density and a certain amount of, uh, residential and commercial.
But you have to have a, you have to have a site plan for us to approve, that we have to approve a set of plans, so they have to draw on...
We can come back next month with that. We're just trying to nail something down. We've got so many different parts and so many different neighbors and community members and...
Yeah, y'all need to come back.
I, I know we haven't voted yet, but I mean, quite frankly, Commissioner Meadows has a very valid point. This has been a moving target and every time we...
It's for two years.
Well, I know, but we're here to, it's still quasi-judicial, so we're gonna take comments. We have a gentleman back here that would like to comment.
Yeah.
Sir, come on up.
Yeah. I mean, I'd like to take a motion that we, that they...
As soon as we take the public comments.
My name is Ty Sims, S-I-M-S is the last name and I have been sworn in. Uh, first, I wanna...
Mr. Sims, before you start...
Yes.
Each of y'all received an email from him. Uh, was it part of the package or not?
No.
I just wanna make sure. Why don't we go ahead and move that into evidence as number three?
That's what I was gonna apologize for if I caused any confusion with that email this morning.
Does the clerk have a copy?
I don't believe so.
I've got, I've got copies right here.
Do you mind handing the clerk a copy?
And, and Mark, we, I have not been able to, to print it out and put it as a quasi-judicial for the clerk. I have not been...
I just, I know you guys have referred to it, so I thought the better practice is to just make sure we have it part.
I would have to get it to the clerk.
The one I have is September fifth, so I might not even have the updated one.
I've got one from one forty-five this afternoon.
Yeah, me too.
I don't have that list.
Is that today's date, Kim?
Yeah, I, I do not...
There's no date on it.
There's no date on it.
Okay, okay. That will be number three. Accepted. Thank you. Mr. Sims, go ahead.
Um, I'll let everybody get down. I, I don't know, you know, some have had a chance to just review this. To clarify, yes, some of the people that are part of the association were for and against. You have seen from the previous meeting, the petition, most of the people that were against the present plan, you know, they obviously had concerns and they were all different types of concerns and that's where this has taken thirty days to kind of figure out a compromise or something that possibly could be. I've had brief discussions or multiple people have had brief discussions with the developer, with Mr. Horn.
Let me, let me clarify some. What you're handing out to us is not the email that we received.
The email that I sent you...
I've got one at one fifty-four this afternoon that says, "I apologize for sending this so close," yada, yada, yada. Uh, it's acceptable. I did not get...
There was no attachment?
No, sir.
Yeah, yeah, I did. There's some attachment on it.
Oh, I did. Okay. I didn't get the attachment, so...
For some reason, it, I sent everybody the same one, for some reason it didn't come through.
So what I'm holding in my hand is what you want to be in evidence, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. But I would like, I would like to include the cover email that came with us, 'cause it was a representation that, that, uh, there is an agreement on this and I would...
Well, I would say in agreement, you know, this is something that has become a compromise that I'm not sure, for sure, if, if Mr. Horn would be willing to accept or not. Uh, I've, you know, we've received his input as to, you know, what he would like. Uh, then we had to take, uh, other people's concerns, including myself. I mean, you know, uh, everybody can't have what they want. I do understand their problems with the land use plan concerning the property, but, you know, as a community, I think that we could deal with some commercial space as long as there are certain restrictions tied to it. I don't know if this is necessarily the right place for commerce in the way of having a general store or any retail, just because of the added traffic to that corner and we do have traffic issues coming up through there like everywhere else. I believe that, you know, most of the people that I've gotten the feedback on are okay if we don't have commerce. If we have professionals or people that, uh, have a trade, that they're not necessarily selling the product there and lowering the square footage. I don't even think, you know, most of the people that we've gotten feedback on, on this type of plan, do not have a problem with the actual infrastructure as it is, but going to more residential. As for the driveways and ingress egress, uh, it's been mentioned and I, I, this is one of the brief discussions I had... this is one of the brief discussions I had with Mr. Horn, was it having one driveway for dual lots? Um, so, these have all been issues that have been discussed. I know that we're looking at, obviously, like you said, a moving target, but the majority of the community has looked at this, and I think with the infrastructure as it is, they're okay with that, as long as the dent, you know, the intensity's lowered on the commercial.
To 9,000 square feet.
Yes. Well, yes, 9,000, I mean, and that right there would have to be, from looking at the footprint, you would have to go vertical, which would be tapered down to have a townish look to it, and most of the people have said that, that they can live with that. Um, from what I've looked at, the parking requirements would be there for that. Um, and, you know, that, that to me seems to be the compromise that has come about.
Okay. But I, I guess my question about what you just passed out is we heard all along this is supposed to be five lots, and, and your handout says six lots, so...
Right. This would be six lots because you had the commercial where lot one is. And so, what we had said is, take away that commercial component on that north side, take it away from, from lot two as well. So, what you've done is you've expanded the residential into, say, over probably half of the commercials.
So, this has changed since this afternoon, then?
No. No, this is what, this is what I sent this afternoon.
Right, but now it's back down to five?
No. No, it's six lots, right there.
I would suggest that, um, if the, if the developer is ready to say, yes, I accept one through seven totally without any, you know, I'll accept it, then if we accept it, then they come back with the plans that actually match that, and then that, that has to be their final, that's the final, you know, approval of it. But, you know, I would like to know that the developer accepts one through seven. If not, then, you know...
Have you seen...
I want to, I want to see the plan. I mean...
Well, yeah, we'd have to come back, but...
Yeah, and we would, the community is very adamant on having these restrictions into the final order and in the covenants and restrictions as well, with, uh, a method to enforce, especially on the commercial, you know, once somebody gets in and starts selling products and going through that process to get them out, if you don't have any teeth, there's not really anything you can do.
Yeah, because when you approve commercial uses, you're approving a litany of, a list of uses that, you know, could...
Eric's worked on a lot of this with the community as well. I don't know if you want me to...
Speak your name.
Eric Zalacek, I was sworn in.
You've been sworn. Spell your last name, please.
Z.A.L.A.C.E. I think part of the confusion, too, is it's starting to sound like Mr. Horn was proposing this, and that's not what he was proposing tonight. We are, we are presenting this, showing him, saying, this is what, as a community, we've come to agreeance, and after some discussions with him, what he could do. We're asking, we're asking what Commissioner Meadows just said. If you are willing to do the seven requirements, will you come back in a month with this plan, then we, we can support that as a community? That's what we're saying.
But they're getting, because the, the older gentleman said he loved to have a coffee shop, and now they're saying they're not going to have a restaurant. I, I...
I was at the, I was at the Historic Point Washington Association meeting where they voted.
Okay.
Sorry, go ahead.
All right, thank you. Um, I would like for the developer to bring it back to us. Listen, I want to hear this out of your lips, and I'd like to see a drawing of what it's going to look like before I make, before I vote on anything.
But we need to continue taking the, the testimony before we do that.
What, what I was going to say is, I was at the meeting for the Historic Point Washington Association. I was invited to that meeting. I was not allowed to vote. The vote that I heard when I was there was just whether or not they would support some type of commercial on the space, and they all voted that yes. The majority voted, the majority of the board that was there voted yes, they would support some form of commercial. One of the strong things that was said is, we do not want to drive tourists back there off the beaches. We want it to be a small community thing. So, then there's been a lot of discussions of, no retail in terms of like a, um, convenience store or something like that is going to survive off the community back there, so you're going to have to drive tourists off the beaches or people back there to make that survive. So, in the discussions as a community, we're like, how can we meet a compromise where he can have some commercial, and yet we're not, you know, creating a real problem, a real bottleneck with the traffic? Because there is a problem back there, especially with the church. It's growing, and I've got tons of videos to show you the massive amount of traffic issues. So, this compromise that everybody came to, not, I can't speak for everybody, but the people that I've spoken with are saying they can live with this, and I've posted this online. I did, I'm the one that started the petition. I've posted it where all those people can see it, and none of them have come tonight, but if they want to, you know, say something, they can. Basically, this compromise with saying absolutely no, uh, commer, retail or restaurant, where it's just artisan and professional workspaces, we can live with that, as long as the design of the building is done, you know, in accordance with the Historic Point Washington Association, so it keeps with the look and the feel of the neighborhood, and then we keep, you know, six residential lots. People are fine with that because they're larger lots, and it keeps with the look and the feel of Point Washington.
Commissioners, any questions for him before we take other public testimony?
Anyone else wish to testify?
Yep, Mr. Horn, you get rebuttal, so hang on.
Sir?
Anyone else? Okay, it's rebuttal time.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mr. Chairman. Um, it's been a long, very long journey.
State your name, spell your last name for the...
Ono Horn, last name Horn, H.O.R.N. First name Ono, O-N-N-O. Uh, it's been a long journey. Some of us, uh, I've already mentioned, we've been working on this for about two years. Um, Ms. Meadows, uh, these conditions for approval, I am fine with, and Ms. Commander, if you would allow us to come back in 30 days incorporating these, uh, these suggestions, I've got some confidence that I know that the community is finally together as one, so that we can proceed. We'd be happy to update the drawings to include these, uh, seven conditions and come back in December for a, uh, final approval.
Commissioners, I would take that as an applicant's request for continuance.
With a little security.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioners, the next item we have on our agenda is item number five in the QJ section. It's a request to approve a final order of the Pleasant Valley Church Communication Tower, project number 15-001-00094. This is Brian Underwood's project, the applicant is AW Solutions, Inc. And this is a 250-foot-tall self-supporting communications tower with a 460-foot square foot, um, shelter for the, uh, communications equipment on a 37.5-acre parcel in future land use and general agriculture. It's located at 3300 State Highway 81 in Ponte Leone, identified by parcel number 21, 3 North, 17, 06,000, 009, 000. This project meets the requirements of the Conference Plan Land Development Code.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, we'll, we'll go ahead and accept the staff report and...
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, this is for the applicant. Like, I don't have any questions for you. Just, you, you represent the applicant, sir?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Please state your name and spell it.
Paul Nuner, N.E.U.N.E.R., and I am sworn in.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, um, was it Muter?
Nuner.
Nuner, okay.
Not the way you spelled it.
I know. All right, um, does the church own that property?
No, it does not. The, the name came from what we call a search ring. Um, it originated from AT&amp;T.
Okay.
So, they, they call it Pleasant Valley Church Search Ring. So, that's why the name Pleasant...
Okay, I was wondering, uh, as a crow flies, that's about two miles from where I live.
Okay.
Is this a, going to be, what, Verizon, AT&amp;T?
AT&amp;T is the one who, who has, uh, driven the, the need for this tower.
Okay.
From there, we will, we will market it to other carriers to say, hey, we have a tower here. You need to service it.
Do you have any idea, and Rick referenced our broadband initiative, right now it's not coming down 81, is it not?
That would be my question, sir, is if there fiber may run in this tower from the AT&amp;T Communications.
Do you have any idea if that's the case?
I believe we're, we're planning on bringing fiber in.
Okay, thank you.
You're a good man.
Any public testimony? Seeing none, what's wishes of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
And if I can just make a comment, I would like to say, uh, I know you earlier honored all the veterans. Just happy 240th birthday to the United States Marine Corps.
Semper Fi.
Semper Fi. Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is number six. It's a request to approve a final order of lots 11, 12, and 13 in the South Walsin Business Center. This is an existing approved light industrial subdivision. Uh, this is a major development order submitted by ECM, requesting approval to construct three metal warehouse and office building consisting of a total of 30,000 square feet on 2.04 acres, located on the south side of Doudna Road, west of County Road 393 North.
Commissioners, any questions?
Of the Conference Plan Land Development Code. Any applicants here, if you have any questions?
Any public testimony?
We...
Seeing none, what's wishes of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We don't have to leave there.
Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, the last item tonight is number seven, request to approve a final plat in Grace Point Phase One. I'll introduce Renee Bradley.
Good evening again. Uh, JS Partner Grace LLC and Interlight Engineering are requesting approval of final plat for 35 single-family lots on 6.83 acres within the promised claim unit development, and this is located south of County 38. The applicant has received all required signatures on the mylar. The applicant has paid the proportional fair share for the 35 units requested at this time, and has also paid the amount for the eight units that are remaining to be platted. Uh, the applicant has also paid their preservation fees for 33% of an acre that has been bought out. The applicant will be required to pay a recreational fee of $229,897.80 prior to recording the plat. The applicant will also be required to pay a 911 addressing fee of $500 prior to recording the plat. The applicant must also pay all recording fees. Staff finds that this plat meets Chapter 177 of Florida statutes and the Land Development Code in a comprehensive plan. Be glad to answer any questions for the board.
Commissioners, any questions?
No.
Any public testimony? Seeing none, what's the wishes of the board?
Motion to approve.
With those conditions as stated.
Is that a second?
That's a second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion by the board? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. All right, stand adjourned.